Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, the eighty-fifth meeting of the town of Hapdadoogus Bay. And for the interests of those listening in, I'm Deputy Mayor Bert Pomeroy. I'll be facilitating over this meeting today as the mayor is out of town. However, the mayor will be joining us online or over telephone and be able to provide commentary as such. So I'd like to call for an adoption of the agenda of the eighty-fifth meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Lori Dyson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Sean Cran. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried unanimous. Delegations, do we have any delegations, Towns? No delegations?
No delegations.
Thank you. Call for the adoption of previous minutes, adoption of the eighty-third minutes, March twenty-third, two thousand and one.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Lori Dyson Edmonds, seconded by...
I'll second.
Councilor Bakie. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
I'm in favor as well, motion carried unanimous. Call for the adoption of previous minutes, eighty-fourth minutes, April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Make the further motioner.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Sean Cran, seconded by Councilor Lori Dyson Edmonds. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. Correspondence is there if anybody has any questions or comments regarding correspondence?
There's no correspondence this month, right?
No correspondence in the package? I think there was one letter. Oh, okay, thank you. I'll move right into committees and recommendations, Municipal Services Committee, Councilor Cran.
Thank you, Deputy. Last meeting present was myself, Councilor Michelle Bakie, Deputy Mayor Bert Pomeroy, Superintendent Water and Sewer Keith Poey, DFO Nadine McCauley, Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy. Meeting was called to order at four fifty-two PM. Review of the previous minutes and action items, no errors or omissions. Manager's report for department manager will so weigh an annual lead. Public Works manager report was a tax and review. Crews are performing regular seasonal duties, tipping fees at fifty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars. New loader working well, no effective negative feedback from HEOs. Third seasonal HEO has been hired. Kellen Drive issuers are being addressed... issues or issuer?
Issues.
Issues, okay. Misprint. Are being addressed daily at thirty kilometer signs remain in place to preserve as much of the existing roadway on the asphalt project begins this summer. Summer dump truck should be back on the road by week's end. Surface water issues were dealt with and looking at installing several leaching fields this summer. Water and sewer manager report was a tax and review, regular maintenance and checks going on. New C L two sensors installed at water treatment plant, new injectors, valves and turbidity meter purchased. Wastewater treatment plant has general maintenance ongoing as well as planned repair on sale. Sandhill is operating as per normal and some mechanical upgrades identified for the backup generator. Ritter brush scheduled for maintenance as time permits. Steam unit out of order and car attend is currently out of commission. Consider replacing car attend with a towable trailer. Overflow event happened at lift station twenty during Easter and has since been resolved. Maintenance plan for lift station twenty-one service calls are ongoing. Under engineering, the manager was not intense, however, his report was attached for committee review. I ask that my report be accepted as presented.
So moved, I have a seconder. Councilor Bakie, any discussion?
I've got a question. Randy, can you probably should give us an update as to where we are with the Johnsons, with the paving contract for the summer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor and with the consultant there past Friday, along with the mayor attended, and the... Basically, it was those three parties, the town, the owner and the consultant contractor. Johnsons are planning on coming to the town probably the first week in May. They're hoping to get started construction. They have to have all their cutting done on the Kellen Drive extension by mid-May for the... It's because of the bird nesting season and so on. They plan on working seven days a week, twelve hours a day, so hopefully they're going to be finished by early August. So at that point, they'll be able to, at this point, they're going to be trucking in the asphalt from their asphalt plant on the Transleverdale Highway. So all in all, it looks like they're going to be, they plan to be very efficient and they have a, they hope to make good progress early in the season and hopefully we'll have this project clued up before, well before summer's end.
Thank you, Town Engineer. Mayor, any other questions?
Yeah, Randy too, you know, they're getting all their, all the protocols in place and you raised a question about all the safety issues and all that, right? And we told them that we want as many local people hired as possible and they also told us that they were also, they've already started advertising for local people. So that's a good question. And Randy, you mentioned to me that there might be a concern with our application for Crown Land.
Yes, Mayor, you're right about the occupation, patient health and safety issues that will be addressed by the contractor. And as you noted, that they will be advertising for local workers where they can avail of them. The Crown Lands buffer is now, I was talking to the surveyor today. Their survey has been complete, the field work has been complete. They expect to have the submission to us within the next day or so, at which time we will then submit to Crown Lands for formal approval of the Crown Land necessary for the extension. So hopefully at that time, we can approach the Crown Lands and get that approval expedited so that contractor won't be delayed.
Randy, you finished, Mayor?
I was just calling to say to Randy, I'm heading back Friday at noon and if the application comes up and you got everything ready to go before then, like, I don't mind making a call to the minister on behalf of the town to tell him that, you know, we want the application approved immediately.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I will, I'll have some information to you tomorrow, regardless of the submission of the survey information. But hopefully, we should have that submitted by the end of the week. So in the meantime, you can make your contact with the minister to see if we can have this approval expedited.
Councilor Compton-Hobbs, you have a question?
Randy, just wanted to get an update on two things. The, I seen the sweeper out on the roads. There's a lot of complaints or a few complaints coming in from some residents who, again, got sand on their lawn, same as previous years. And we purchased six walk-behind sweepers last year and I'm just wondering if you had a conversation with the department there. You know, are we going to be going out and clearing the corner lots is what we agreed to in the past. But there's even picture surface now with a lot of sand on people's lawns and people are not pleased. So we have the equipment, we have the manpower, so is that something they're going to be doing or...?
Yes, that's correct, Councilor. We have, the sand sweepers are now at the depot being serviced and we do have two seasonals coming on, I think, within the next week or so. So we will be able to avail of the, I think we have four sweepers.
Six, I think, we purchased.
Well, we have, there'll be an operation, there will all be an operation as soon as we get two seasonals hired. In the meantime, we do have two labors that we can send out as soon as the, as soon as the equipment gets serviced.
And the sweeper truck is out doing the roads now, right?
Sweeper truck now has been out and has done a number of roads and because of the wet weather, we also have the sweeper attachment attached to the loader for some other roads too.
Right. And the other thing I was going to ask you, is there any date or any talk discussion around the spring cleanup? Because as we know, there's lots of picture servicing of the garbage around town. So I just wondered, are you going to be having that discussion soon with your, with the staff or...?
Yeah, that's correct, Councilor. We do have a new, as everyone's aware, we do have a new superintendent of public works and within, he only just started on Monday yesterday. So sometime this week, I plan on sitting down with him and coming up with a schedule for the spring cleanup. And as well, we also have our speed signs that we need to put out and we also have to put out our speed bumps as we're confident that we won't have any snow events in the next little while.
Randy, is there a schedule for, in place for what roads are being swept when? Do you know if there's any plans for that? Because you're getting a lot of calls about the roads and the sidewalks and stuff, right?
No, that's right. And I did discuss that with the superintendent and he was going to discuss that with his two foremen as to the preparation of a schedule.
Any further questions?
There was one, I had three or four calls from people, like, as you know, council is aware that our staff done a good job of going around and they were starting to remove a lot of snow or there was a lot of sand on corners, intersections on people's lands and there were some people called and inquired as to why we stopped. But in a conversation with Keith, he said that where everything became so soft that they had to stop doing it because they end up, they would do more damage to lawns than anything else. But Keith did tell the people that he's got their names and their numbers and when we start with the sand sweepers, that these people will be taken care of.
All right, no further questions, call for a vote, all those in favor of accepting the report as read?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mayor?
Aye.
Just one more note, the next meeting is scheduled for May eleventh at four forty-five PM.
Okay.
For Municipal Services.
Thank you, Councilor. So the motion is carried? Let's move on, you have no recommendations, Councilor?
Nope. Sorry, no, I don't know.
Let's move on to Community Services and Recreation, Councilor Compton-Hobbs.
Community Service and Recreation met on April the twelfth. Present was myself, Councilor Michelle Bakie, Public Relations Manager Waylon Williams, Program Coordinator Anne Morris, and Town Engineer Andy Dillon, Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy, DFO Nadine McCauley and Acting Town Manager and Director, Community Development Research Brenna Gerer. Some of the discussions we had during the meeting, talked about the Wellness Center. We got an update on that, as everyone heard now, we're planning an opening the end of June, pending no further delays, of course. And the community is all hyped up now with the Wellness Center. Actually, today, they posted their job postings online. So if anybody's looking for work at the YMCA, go on to the YMCA Newfoundland-Labrador site and you'll see all the listings of the jobs for the Central Labrador Wellness Center. We talked about a kayak canoe launching. Actually, we had four items that were sent to me that they want to brought forward at the Community Service and Recreation Committee, so I added them to our agenda. And I hope he's, I hope this guy's listening because he, one of them was the kayak canoe launching area for Goose Bay. And I was aware that our Community Development Manager Brenna advised, and I was aware of this too, and I wanted to wait for the meeting, but advised that an application to the Canadian Tire Jump Start program is in progress and to top up a new program in partnership with the Labrador Hunting and Fishing Association to purchase kayaks, canoes, safety equipment and training. So we're on to that one and hopefully we'll get some funding for that. We talked about outdoor tennis courts, that was another item that he wanted brought forward. And Randy, I just wanted you, if you could give us a little update. We did have a brief discussion in the meeting that this is not the first time tennis courts came up under Community Service and Recreation and it is in the design from back in two thousand and twelve. At the time, the cost was very high, I believe over two hundred thousand to use as a multi-pad for tennis courts and pickleball and whatever. It has been discussed, you know, several times. It's on the radar, I got it kept on the agenda on our committee now for action on it. But if you could just give us a brief update, what was in that report back then?
Yes, Councilor, there was a multi-use purpose court for the MMC complex. And not only was it for tennis courts, it was also for all applicable sports or that would, that could avail of that size of a court. I know that it was mentioned for pickleball, it was tennis and there may have been a couple of other sports that would avail of this multi-use court. It was, I know it was considered in the budget at the last budget about, because of other commitments to infrastructure and so on, it was not funded at that time. And possibly, I'm sure, that will be brought forward again for this year's budget, for consideration.
Yeah. So I just want to say it is not new to us. We've talked about tennis courts many times in the past. It's not budgeted this year, so obviously we won't have tennis courts this summer. But it will be an item, I'm sure, when the new council comes on again in September, it'll be back on the budget list again for tennis courts. Because no doubt, we do need them, but finding the money to build it is, you know, is something we need to look at as a council in the new budget coming up in October. The other item was resurfacing the bike trail. This we all know, anybody that lives here and uses the bike trail or the whacking trails all know that this needs to be upgraded. This item is part of the trail upgrades from Tim Horton's to Kellen Drive. This item is part of the trail upgrades from Tim Horton's to Kellen Drive and will be kept in the forefront once upgrades. So it's part of the gateway trail that we're doing upgrades to in September. So Randy, if you just want to give us another little brief update on that?
Yes, Counselor. This, there was a tender for the, the project was divided into two parts. And the first part were the two gateways, one at down in the Tim Horton's area. And the other one up at the intersection of Kellen Drive and Hamilton River Road. We did tender this in the fall. We did not receive any bids. So this project now, over the last couple of months, we've had a closer look at the actual design of the project. We've made a couple of minor modifications that are under final design right now that, so hopefully, within the next week or so, we'll be going to tender again for that project. And then as well, we'll also be going to tender for the actual trail upgrade. So there's two parts, one, the two gateways. And the other one is the paving of the bike trail and the upgrading of the shoulders and so on.
Yeah, and for anybody that's listening, we know that the bike trail is not the only trail in town. We also know that we need sidewalks and other trails. And there was a trail study completed last year. I don't know where that's to, Randy?
That's right, Counselor. There is a trail study completed, and that was part of the trail study, this particular project. And as you note, that there are many other areas for which we do require trail upgrades and improvements and so on. As well as other sidewalk improvements that the town certainly is high on the priority list that we will be considering in future, during future budget considerations.
Yeah, so that too is on the radar. So this, you know, again, is not nothing new to us. We're all, you know, we all use these trails or whatever. And we're well aware of, you know, there needs to be desperate upgrades. It all comes down to the almighty dollar. And the other item was Snow Goose Mountain operation. Is that something the town wants to work with, the Snow Goose Mountain? We can certainly reach out to Snow Goose Mountain and, you know, see if there's anything that we can do to work together on that project. We had a little discussion on Healthy Waters Labrador. They've provided us with a new draft. It's been sent to all the council to review and be meeting with them sometime in May. And some other discussions, the Summer Rec Program. I just found out this week that we did get approved for 10 students and there will be a Summer Rec Program. Obviously, based on the provincial COVID guidelines. The Minor Soccer Program was supposed to start on Sunday. It's been delayed because they have not received their return to play plan from NLSA. So hopefully, they'll receive that this week. I know there's other leagues that's trying to get up and start it this summer, the men's and ladies softball leagues. And so hopefully, we'll get some back, normalcy back around recreation in some of the different leagues and organizations. Our next meeting is scheduled for May the 10th, so I ask that you please accept my report as presented.
So moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Sean Cran. Any discussion?
No discussion, just that I know that a lot of these groups have reached out to the MHA to try and get a move on the return to play approval from the different governing agencies. So I'm sure Mr. Trumper is probably on the ball with that. I know he's responded to several groups, so we need to put a push on that because we don't want to be left at the bottom of the pile.
Yeah, I know myself, as President of Ladies Softball, I sent in a return to play plan and still waiting to hear back. But my understanding, there's 60, so hopefully, if our MHA can help us along with that, he will. Because we don't want to delay all our leagues. I mean, they were all, you know, canceled last year, so people are eager to get back into sporting recreation. So hopefully, if we need some assistance there, he'll help us.
Mayor, any comments?
No, but it'll be good to get our sports groups up and running. I mean, as Counselor is well aware that, you know, like last year, there was pretty well zero activity. And, you know, we lost revenue. Well, we still have to maintain our staff, we still have to maintain our buildings and our grounds and that. So, you know, as much as we enjoy providing the service and the buildings, you know, as a council, we need revenue. And I think that's, you know, councils are going to have to be very careful as even the new councils move ahead that there's no question that there's going to be a sizable amount of money that we all knew that we would have to put into the Wellness Center. So hopefully, that under the federal programs and the provincial programs, that there will be monies which, you know, like a lot of the organizations can avail of. But at the same time, I'm sure anything that we can do, we'll be only too glad to do so.
Okay, thank you. Call for a vote. No further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Vote is carried unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to development planning. I'll present the report and I'll ask if Counselor Bakie could just chair this portion of the meeting.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Counselor Bakie. The Development Planning and Enforcement Committee met on April the 15th. President were myself as Chair, Counselors Lori Dyson Edmonds and Jackie Compton-Hobbs, Engineer and Co-Manager Randy Dillon, Municipal Tech DJ Elliott, GIS Tech Paul Zow, Municipal Enforcement Officer Larry Baker, DFO and Co-Manager Nadine McCauley, and Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy, regrets from Municipal Tech Brian Johnson. Meeting was called to order at 4:50 PM. Committee reviewed previous minutes and action items. There were no errors or omissions. One of the action items, Madam Chair, discussed during the meeting involved the airport noise exposure forecast contours and residential development airport zoning regulations. For the interest of others on council and for those listening in, current regulations, town regulations state that residential development, unless it is within or immediately adjacent to a built-up residential area with full municipal services, accessory to the use of operations of the airport and/or is military in nature and/or falls under the class of commercial residential, which includes hotels, motels, inns, and so on, shall be permitted above the noise exposure forecast or the NEF 35 contour line as shown on the town's land use maps as part of the town's development plans. All development is subject to the Government of Canada Airport Zoning Regulations under the Aeronautics Act. The town can require that as a condition of a permit for a dwelling, the owner states that the owner is aware of the possible noise from aircraft and that the owner will not bring legal action against the town or the Government of Canada for any disturbance, possible health effects, or loss of property value or damage to property caused by aircraft noise or other aircrafts associated with Goose Bay Airport. The town has received several Crown Land and discretionary land use applications for the Quarry Road area along the Trans-Arbor Highway. Much of this area falls within the airport noise contour exposures, exposure contours. And under the regulations, we're not permitted to approve applications for developing this area. Staff has been following what Transport Canada, DND, and other relevant departments and agencies determine whether or if these restrictions can be lifted and reflected in the town's regulations once our new tenure municipal plan is approved. We hope to have more information in our next committee meeting. I'm not sure if the town engineer can add a little bit more to that?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We've been in contact with Five Wing. And they've notified us that they've also been in contact with Transportation Canada for information and input, as well as NAV Canada. So we're hoping to have a meeting within the next, within the next few days. So we've been advised that they will be in contact, probably a few days ago, within the week. So I'm hoping that sometime this week, we will get some kind of contact back from Five Wing and arrange a meeting with the other authorities.
Okay, thanks. Much of the discussion during our meeting centered around Crown Land, discretionary land use variance applications, as well as current regulations regarding beekeeping, dog and cats, and urban chicken regulations. And a number of recommendations will be coming shortly. Before that, however, I just want to note that during the meeting, our Municipal Enforcement Officer put forward a draft plan to establish trucking routes within the community. The planned routes, if approved by council, would restrict tractor-trailer traffic in some areas of town, particularly residential areas. This is a work in progress. And as key stakeholders will be conducted throughout the process, consulted rather, throughout the process. And committees hope to bring forward a recommendation at our next meeting. Municipal Enforcement Officer also presented his monthly report, highlighted some of the key files he's been working on over the past month. A copy of his report is contained in the council package for review, along with reports from provincial court, financial control summary, monthly payment summary, plants report, and the monthly animal control report. The RCMP report to the mayor is also contained in the package. There be no further business. Meeting adjourned at 6:02 PM. The next meeting is scheduled for May the 13th at 4:45 PM. Before I present the committee's recommendations, I move that council accept my report as read.
I move.
Moved by Deputy Mayor?
I'll second.
Perma and seconded by Lori Dyson, Counselor Lori Dyson Edmonds. Any questions regarding the report?
Just on the enforcement part, I think it's important that we let the community know, which they already know. But just to reiterate it, that there's a lot of work being done around the transiently population. And we do have two outreach coordinators now. One is Roy Blake, who's in partnership with the town and New Natsia Wood. He's been employed as the outreach coordinator. And the other one is Scott Hudson through the Salvation Army, the community outreach coordinator. Which I think is making a huge difference. And I know that our enforcement officer's been working closely with them. And I think the public should be aware of that, that we as a town are doing what we can to try to address this issue. And we've certainly come a long way and we're still continuing to work on that concern. And hopefully, you know, it'll only get better in the community.
Thank you, Counselor Compton-Hobbs. Mayor Anderson, do you have anything to add?
No, not at this time, no.
Okay, no further discussion and all in, sorry, anybody else have a discussion? No? Good, all in favor of the report?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll move anonymously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We received and reviewed an application numbered 15754. Sorry, 157574. From Ms. Sarah McCarthy and Ms. Jessica Don for a parcel of Crown Land at the end of Juniper Street for residential purposes. Committee advised staff to inform the applicant that if approved, the town will not be responsible for providing and maintaining access to these properties. That they would be responsible for all costs associated with providing municipal services to the area as well. In any event, I move that council approve and support the committee's recommendation. Have no objection to the application, provided the use is compliant with all of the town's development regulations.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Perma and seconded by Counselor Dyson Edmonds. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor, again, all the rules and the regulations and the bylaws have been adhered to?
That's correct. Your worship is a Crown Land application and the town has no use for that land as such. And therefore, has no objections to the application. I guess, provided that obviously, the town would not be responsible for providing services to that area that would be at the cost of the property owners.
Thank you.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass anonymously. And your next recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next recommendation is much the same as the previous one. It involves a second application numbered 157575 from Ms. Sarah McCarthy and Jessica Don for a parcel of land adjacent to the previous parcel that the council just voted to buy. So without further ado, I move that council approve and support the committee's recommendation. Have no objection to the application, provided the use is compliant with the town's development regulations.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Perma and seconded by Counselor Dyson Edmonds. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, I didn't hear who was making the application.
Okay, the application again was from Sarah McCarthy and Ms. Jessica Don.
Okay.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass anonymously.
We received and reviewed an application numbered 157593 from Mr. Harrison Dean Burry, who hopes to acquire a grant for Crown Land at Rose Point Forest Access Road for a seasonal recreational cottage. I move that council approve and support the committee's recommendation to have no objection to the application, provided its use is compliant with all of the town's development regulations.
Moved by Deputy Perma and seconded by Counselor Cran. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, next, motion carried.
We received an application numbered 157596 from the Grand River Snowmobile Club for a permit to occupy Crown Land for the purpose of providing snowmobile ATV access to cabins in the Burnt Point area. I move that council support and approve the committee's recommendation. Have no objection to the application, provided the use is compliant with town's development regulations.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Perma and seconded by Counselor Compton-Hobbs. Any discussion?
I just want to add, there was, I guess it would be, from what I understand right now, what's happening now is people are pretty well driving over wetland areas and not following any particular trail. This trail will be developed in such a way that would protect a lot of those areas, particularly for ATV use. There'll be a system put in place, so I think it's a good thing for that particular part of town.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mayor Anderson?
No, they would have to go through all the governing bodies, I guess, with their application anyway. So if there's any concerns with the wetlands, you know, that'll be all answered in the documents.
You're trying to protect the wetland, is my understanding, and build a trail that's going to go around that area?
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Received and reviewed an application numbered 157624 from Mr. Keith Patrick Blueby for a Crown Land grant at the end of Bakie Place for residential purposes. Committee was advised that the land in question is directly adjacent to an environmentally protected area. Therefore, I move that council support the committee's recommendation to deny approval of this application.
I second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Perma and seconded by Counselor Lori Dyson Edmonds. Any further discussion?
I just, if we can elaborate a little bit more on that area, so he understands why it was denied. We're saying that it's close by an environmentally protected area, but I believe that there's no road to that area that he would have to construct or somebody would, right?
Yeah, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
And kind of like in towards the back of it, so there would have to be some, and that area was engineered back when it was developed. And there was a reason why there wasn't another lot put there. I think part of the application as well was, I think there were some, the application, and I don't know if the town engineer can confirm, there was some, yeah, they're actually putting in an artesian well and wanted to put in an artesian well and a septic system because it's not serviced. And that's something I think that we shouldn't be, in that area of town, we shouldn't be entertaining. That's correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just that if staff could explain exactly all them reasons why to him, so it's communicated and he understands that he's not being, you know, whatever, this is not council, you know. This is why we're, we can't approve it and he should understand and the reasons are.
Yeah, that's right, Counselor. Full discussion will be held with the applicant to apprise him as to the reasons why this application is not recommended for approval.
No further discussion?
No, just to add too, that I'm glad that the question was raised because I was going to raise it, like, and so the public knows that, like, we approve Crown Lands applications and then there's others that we have to deny, but... and then there's others that we have to deny, but when we deny it, there's a rhyme or a reason as to why their application is denied.
That's correct, Mayor.
Yeah. Any further discussion? There be none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We received an application numbered 157725 from J Mac Construction for a parcel of crown land off Elizabeth Street for residential purposes. This is similar to requests that have been approved in the past. The area is serviced. Therefore, I move that council support and approve committee's recommendation to have no objection to the application, provided the use is in compliance with all of the town's development regulations.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Perma and seconded by Lord, Councilor Lord Dyson Edmonds.
Compton-Hobbs seconded that, whatever.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who seconded?
Councilor Compton-Hobbs.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Any further discussion?
As Deputy said, that parcel of land was applied for before in the past, but because of the rules and the regulations, and I think something to do with wetlands or something that it was denied, but since then, Deputy Mayor, I'm not sure if you explained it, but there's new rules and regulations in place now, and that parcel of land now is, it's crown lands with no stipulations applied to it.
No, just to clarify, your worship, the parcel that he's looking for has no, it is crown land and it is not environmentally protected. The land that's nearby is. At one point, I think there may have been applications for a portion of that piece of land as well, and they've been denied, but in this case, this is not an environmentally protected area. And in the future, I believe our new development plans will address some of these areas as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We received a discretionary land use application from Ms. Margie Chavez, who hopes to establish a home-based business at 1 Thompson Drive for the purpose of providing baked goods and balloon decorating services. Move that council approve and support the application with the following conditions: that a fire and life safety inspection as per NFPA 101 be satisfactorily completed at the applicant's cost; that the applicant provides an application for a change of use; that the use be in compliance with all of the town's development regulations with special reference to Section 54; and that the applicant obtains all required approvals from ServiceNL or any government agency having jurisdiction.
Moved by Councilor, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Perma and seconded by Councilor Cran. Any further discussion? There be none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We received an application for a variance for residential property located at 37 Mitchell Street. Just for the interest of those listening and for the record, the town can approve variances of up to 10%. In this case, the applicant is looking for a variance of .09%. Basically, the property is less than two inches outside of the required setbacks. I move that council support the variance for the application with the following conditions: that the variance is for .09%, that there be compliance with all the town's development regulations, and that any required approvals by other authorities having jurisdiction be obtained.
I second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Perma and seconded by Councilor Lord Dyson Edmonds. Any further discussion?
Bert, you want to just give the reasoning behind those small amounts having to be applied for?
Yeah, and from what we can gather, I don't know if the town engineer can probably jump in here at any time, but when the road was constructed, subdivision was constructed, it may have been just a matter of being off an inch or two in one area, and plus the curvature in the road that kind of threw things off.
That's right, Deputy Mayor. It was, when you draw a straight line, you get a certain measurement, but there was a small curvature in the road which, when you do the actual, do an accurate survey, shows that you would need a small variance to conform to the town's regulations.
Yeah, so we're talking less than two inches, so.
Yeah, yeah, very, very minimal.
And the whole idea of that was for legality reasons or?
Yeah, in order to be compliant with the regulations, they would have to have.
Yeah, that's right, Councilor.
Yeah, we're going to run into quite a few of these, you know, even future councils or councils are going to run into the same thing, that the way the surveys were done, that you'll find a lot of these is going to be, a prime example is just from here, probably a couple inches, so pretty straightforward.
Any further discussion? Seeing there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Again, we received an application for a variance for a property located at 35 and 37 Aspen Road. The applicant, Pressure Pipe Steel Fabrication Limited, is seeking a variance through the rear of the property. I move that council support the application with the following conditions: that the variance is for 4.8%, that there be compliance with all of the town's development regulations, and that any required approvals by other authorities having jurisdiction be obtained.
I second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Perma and seconded by Councilor Lord Dyson Edmonds. Any further discussion?
Pretty straightforward.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We received an application for variance for property at 21 Hamel Street. The applicant is looking for an 8.33% side yard variance with variance. I move that council approve and support committee's recommendation to approve the application with the following conditions: that the variance is for 8.33%, changing the side yard width from three meters to 2.75 meters; that there be compliance with all the town's development regulations; and that any required approvals by other jurisdictions or authorities having jurisdiction be obtained.
Moved by Deputy Perma and seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Any further discussion? There be none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next recommendation involves the town's beekeeping regulations. Committee is recommending some minor revisions, basically just some word changes, some tightening of some of the words within the regulations. And a copy of the regulations is contained in council's package for reference. I move that council approve and support the revised regulations.
I second that.
Moved by Deputy Perma and seconded by Councilor Lord Dyson Edmonds. Any further discussion? There be none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, similarly, Madam Chair, changes are also being proposed for the urban chicken regulations as contained in the council package. Again, some minor changes to that. I move that council support committee's recommendation to approve the revised regulations.
I second that.
Moved by Deputy Perma and seconded by Councilor Lord Dyson Edmonds. Any further discussion? There be none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried.
And finally, Madam Chair, with respect to the dog and cat regulations, again, some minor wording, changes, and edits, move that council support and approve committee's recommendation to accept the revised regulations as contained in the council package.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Perma.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Cran. Any further discussion?
Yep, that's it.
There be none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried.
That's it for the recommendations, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And a motion to accept your report?
That's, we've, we've rolled out.
Okay, we did that, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the interest of those listening in, Councilor Baky relinquished the chair back to me, and can you continue on with the meeting now?
I thought you were going to hit me with the gamble.
So let's move on to.
My apologies if I was a little too loud.
Thank you, Councilor. So let's move on to economic development, public engagement. Councilor Lord Dyson Edmonds, please.
Thank you. The Economic Development and Public Engagement Committee met on Tuesday, April 13th. Present was myself, Councilor Compton-Hobbs, Waylon Williams, Brenna Jahar, Kathy Eddy, and Nadine McCauley, regrets from Sean Cran. It was called to order at 12:04. There were no errors or omissions from the minutes. We had a report from the Public Relations and Special Events Manager, just giving an outline of the activity on the website and some troubleshooting, of course. The manager also noted that he had contacted the administrator of the concerning Happy Valley Goose Bay page because, you know, as we all know, there are people around town that think that that page is actually done by the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay, and it isn't, so that was taken care of. There were some promotional issues that we had him put out as well, and we had a discussion on how we would be handling delegates for meetings, and the committee agreed to monitor it, and we will decide from there. The Community Development and Research Coordinator Brenna Jahar presented her report and gave updates on quite a few issues, actually. The MITEX, the MITEX bus study, Rapid Housing Initiative, which has taken up a considerable amount of discussion, as well as meetings and a lot of groundwork as well. We had discussions on the RV park, the establishment of the provincial park, the reaching home NL and the COVID relief fund associated with that. The Healthy Communities Funding Application was also discussed. Brenna was working on that as well. And we also had a discussion regarding our communications we were having with the Newfoundland Labrador Housing Corporation, the partnership, as well as the gathering place. There were discussions regarding the ACOA meeting and junior achievement, the Take Charge application, the composting with the Multimaterial Stewardship Board, the Community Gardening Fund, as well as the MNL conference that's coming up, and our meeting with, that we are setting up with the band council. There's a lot of work going on with the department for sure. Brenna has been extremely busy. That was about it for our meeting. It was adjourned 12:50. I asked that my report be accepted as read, and I do have a recommendation to read.
Okay, so moved? Do you have a second? Seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Any discussion?
Just two things. I know Brenna's doing a lot of work around RV park. Being on council for these years, I've heard a lot from the community, people like to see a RV park, and she's doing a lot of work, so hopefully we can get some headway with that. We did have a design completed for a tourist, I guess, RV park. I think there was 20 lots in that design, but we're looking for also something for the community. There's many RV owners here in town now and staycation, you know, and people are not going far with the COVID pandemic, so hopefully we can get some movement. I know it's not going to happen overnight, but we've been talking about it a long time, so, you know, to see some headway on that is good. The other thing, the Rapid Housing funding, we were denied the funding, but I know Brenna, recently the federal budget, there was more money announced for Rapid Housing, so I know Brenna's gone back to CMHC and in discussions with them if we need to shift our priority or, you know, if there's something else we could do that we might get considered again for that funding, so hopefully we'll get somewhere with that.
And we have, we have a lot of people supporting us in pushing through that as well, and hopefully we will, it'll be looked at again.
Okay, any other comments or discussion on this issue?
And for the general public, that council reached out to Minister Seamus O'Reagan to express our disappointment that our funding was denied, but to make sure that he was well aware that we were on the radar for, excuse me, any new monies, and hopefully with monies that was announced in the budget, that hopefully that before too long, we can get something approved.
Yeah, we had a great meeting with Seamus. Of course, everybody knows Seamus being raised here in Happy Valley, so that was a very positive meeting as well.
Just on that note too, Mayor, I noticed a letter today from Statistics from one of our recent meetings, that we said we'd send that letter off to MP Seamus O'Reagan on some of the statistics around here with, you know, different statistics.
Policing.
From our meeting with the RCMP, so, yeah, so hopefully the town management will get that letter sent off as soon as we can, because we told him from our meeting that we would send that off, because, of course, Seamus, like Lori said, being from here, is well aware of some of the issues here and was on board to assist any way he can, so hopefully we can get some help from him as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I do believe the letter is signed, the letter should be signed by now.
Okay, yep, yep. Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any more comments? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Carried unanimously. You have one recommendation, Councilor?
I do, with regards to the support delivering community power. Whereas there is an urgent need for banking services among the unbanked or underbanked, given that thousands of villages and rural municipalities do not have a bank branch, and more than 900 municipalities have expressed their support for postal banking, and whereas thousands of Canadians do not have access to affordable high-speed internet, and the federal government has long promised to bridge the rural broadband gap, and whereas urgent action is needed to establish a robust network of electric vehicle charging stations, and whereas to achieve carbon neutral targets by 2050, Canada Post must greatly accelerate the electrification of its fleet, and whereas the extensive network of post offices in our communities can provide a wide range of services as community hubs, and whereas Canada's post letter carriers and RSMCs can check in on vulnerable residents to help keep us in our homes longer as we age, and whereas Canada Post must play its part for a more equitable post-pandemic recovery, whereas the way forward for Canada Post, the report of the 2016 Federal Public Review of the Postal Service, recommended that Canada Post expand services and adapt its services to the changing needs of the public, and whereas the Canadian Union of Postal Workers has advanced Delivering Community Power, a vision of the post-carbon digital age postal service that addressed the above needs and more, be it resolved that the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay endorse Delivering Community Power and write to the Honorable Anita Anan, Minister of Public Services and Procurement, with its rationale and a copy of this resolution. So whereas there are many ideas in this platform, if implemented, would stand to greatly improve service delivery and access to essential services for our town residents, it is recommended that council endorse this resolution.
I'll second that. Okay, moved by Councilor Dyson Edmonds, seconded by Councilor Sean Cran. Any discussion? I got a question. I'm just curious, how much consultation's been held? I know this is not coming directly from Canada Post, but rather from QB, the union. Has there been consultations, and it may not apply so much to our community as it would for more rural communities that don't have those services, but has there been any consultation with, say, the local Chamber of Commerce or the business community here? Because a lot of businesses, some businesses provide similar services, and having Canada Post and taxpayers' dollars competing with those services, I think warrants a discussion, at least with the Chamber of Commerce.
Absolutely, and, I mean, the report itself was from the 2016 Federal Public Review of the Postal Service.
So it's a bit old.
So it is a bit old, so most definitely, and I'm sure that we can, we can task Brenna to reach out to the. So it is a bit old. So most definitely, and I'm sure that we can task Brenna to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, and we can...
And all we're asked to do is just support a resolution that they would bring forward. As for what the contents of the letter to the minister, I think it's important that we find out exactly, you know, what the local business community thinks of this initiative.
For sure.
Any further discussions? Mayor, any discussions?
No. I think, you know, like, all municipalities across Canada's been giving a copy of that resolution to support. And I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of other municipalities who will be asking basically the same question, Deputy Mayor, that you just raised. So I'm fine with it.
No further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. A motion carried unanimous. Next, we'll move on to Finance Administration. But before I do that, for the interest of council, I'm asking if I can just turn the gavel over once more to Counselor Michelle Bakie, as I inadvertently left out one of the recommendations from Development and Planning.
Okay, you may go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Just the, it was a variance application that was overlooked. We had 13, 14 recommendations. I only read out 13. So variance application is for 42 Pottle Street. Committee recommends council support and approve an application from Clayton Joseph Howard Mitchellmore for a 0.6% building line setback variance for 42 Pottle Street with the following conditions. That the variance is for 0.6%, which is basically, again, less than two inches. Compliance with all the town's development regulations, and that any required approvals by other authorities having jurisdiction for this type of product be obtained.
I'll second that, but I thought I already seconded that one earlier.
No, we had, I think we had four variance ones. I left one in.
Yeah, we missed that one.
Okay, I was looking at 42 Pottle Street, but I thought I was supporting that one. But either way, I'll support it now.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Primry, seconded by Counselor Compton Hobbs. Any further discussion or comments to this item? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Counselor, for taking over.
Take that gavel back where?
I do love to gavel.
Okay, so we'll move on to Finance Administration Policy and Counselor Michelle Bakie.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, sorry, Deputy Mayor Primry. Finance Administration Policy Committee met on April 19, 2021, and was called to order at 4:40 P M. Those in attendance was myself as Chair, Deputy Mayor Bert Primry, and Counselor Lori Dyson Edmonds, and D F O Nadine McGauley, and H R Manager Kellyanne Jack, and Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy. Committee reviewed the March 15, 2021 minutes, and there were no errors or omissions. Nadine McGauley stated that the application was received for 2021 for low-income relief. To date, we received 22 applications for 100%, 17 applications for 75%, 11 applications for 50%, and 11 applications for 25%. D F O gave her department overtime report stating that we are doing very well and are on budget. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:37 P M. The next meeting is scheduled for May 17, 2021 at 4:45. I now ask the council to accept this report for record-keeping of the town council's public meeting dated April 27, 2021.
So moved by Counselor Michelle Bakie. Do I have a second there?
I second that.
Seconded by Counselor Lori Dyson Edmonds. Any discussion? There be no further discussion, or any discussion, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimous. Okay, you have some recommendations, Counselor?
I do. The first one, be it resolved that Counselor Joe Tremblin has leave of absence effective April to June 2021 due to ongoing health concerns.
I'll second that. Moved by Counselor Bakie, seconded by Counselor Cran. Any, it's a H R matter. Is this something we should enter into a privileged meeting to discuss, Town Clerk?
There was a privileged meeting on this item.
Okay, all right. All right. So the results of the privileged meeting is what we're ratifying today. Correct. Okay, thank you. Okay, we, no discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Be it resolved that Counselor Tremblin's approved leave of absence, be it paid leave of absence.
Okay, the motion's on the table. Do I have a second there?
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Michelle Bakie, seconded by Counselor Compton Hobbs. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimous.
Policy A 0011, revision. The F A P Committee recommends council approve the update to Policy A 0011. Recording of council proceedings and unlines both audio and video and live streaming to social media platforms such as Facebook and YouTube, and provide residents' post-access via the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay website.
Okay, so moved. Do we have a second there?
Right there.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Cran, moved by Counselor Bakie. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got some discussion on this. This came up several times in the past. Never heard of it till we read it in the package last week. It was brought to the Finance Committee, which should have been brought to the rest of the council, something like this, because we've had several discussions on it. Some councils were for it, and some councils were against it. I personally do not support being, and I have no problem with audio, no problem at all. We need to be transparent to the community. And I got no problem speaking up, and I don't care who hears me speaking up. But I certainly do not want to be on a camera in these council chambers. I just sat here for the last hour, personally, myself, with hot flashes waving a paper in my face. I do not want to be sitting on a camera.
As did the rest of us, and this is the discussion that we've had multiple, multiple times. And I got no problem with the audio as well, and it's something that we've talked about on a regular basis. And I got no problem with the video as well, as long as it's not on me. And I've said that in numerous, numerous committee meetings.
Yeah, so, I mean, if this policy gets passed, I mean, I want to note it in the minutes that I do not ever want a camera on me when I'm sitting in this chamber.
I got no problem with the policy being passed as well, but, I mean, we don't have to, we can decide ourselves whether or not we want to be on camera.
It's our right, not a policy, to tell me if I want to sit in front of a camera. And I feel strongly about that. I've said it over and over and over for the past year, and to read it in a package and not have no discussion as a council as a whole, it bothers my mind.
Any other discussion, comments? Mayor?
Just that, I'll just point out that I did bring Jackie's concerns when we did talk about it at the committee level. I did once again bring up Jackie's concerns as well, not only my own.
Well, I understand concerns people have. I have no issues with it. It doesn't bother me. And I know a lot of other municipalities in the province have been doing this for quite some time, both audio and visual. And, you know, I think it's in line, it's more and more open and accountable to the public. It may draw more interest into the council proceedings, and I therefore support it.
It's not about accountable transparency. Like I said, everybody knows Jackie Compton has voice. I'm not as scared to speak up, and I'm not as scared who hears me. But I'm not comfortable, for my own reasons, sitting in front of a camera and being livestreamed or whatever. If it means I got to sit up there in the gallery, then I'll sit up there in the gallery. But I'm not going to sit in front of the camera.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect that Counselors Cran, Bakie, and the mayor and myself approved the recommendation. Two against, Counselor Compton Hobbs and Counselor Dyson Edmonds. Motion is carried. Any next recommendation?
Before we move on to that, I'd like to ask that the town manager make sure it's noted that I requested that I not be put on camera in any future meetings. Want my audio, I want my voice to be heard, but I do not want to be on a camera.
Okay, let's move on to next recommendation, Counselor.
079463 vacant property tax. The F A P Committee recommends council approve to adjust 2021 taxes from vacant commercial property tax to commercial property tax for parcel. 079463, due to the owner's intent to build.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Counselor Bakie, seconded by Counselor Compton Hobbs. Any discussion?
Can you just name again the, did we name the property in question, or was just the number attached to it?
The number attached to it, but just for the interest of the public, I guess we can, we can, there was a, we're talking about the parcel of land on the corner of Grenfell Street and Grand Street, and that burned down a couple of years ago. The owner has intentions of rebuilding there, and it's an extenuating circumstance. The building was totally destroyed and removed, I must say, immediately after it was cleared. And the owner intends to build, and this year, it was identified as a parcel of vacant land and taxed accordingly under, as a vacant land tax. And so the owner has requested that town reconsider the vacant land tax and charge taxes accordingly as in the past, based on assessed value, as he has intentions of rebuilding there. It's not a vacant parcel of land, in his opinion.
And we also had a discussion around that particular piece of land. Because it was unfortunately destroyed by fire, it didn't take very long. As soon as the investigator cleared it, within days, it was hauled away. So something that we hope will happen with other properties that have since burned as well.
Any other comments, Mayor?
Yeah, the owner called me and explained the whole situation, and I told him to write that to council. So I guess that's exactly what he did. So when the question is called, I will vote in favor.
Yeah, it was pretty straightforward. It's a vacant land. It's not vacant because he is going to build, but at this time, due to the pandemic and whatever materials...
A lot of extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, so he's...
It was previously developed, yes.
Yes, yeah. If it was normal situation, he would have started by now, but due to the circumstances, so, pretty straightforward.
No further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimous.
Thank you. 262389, low-income relief. The F A P Committee recommends council approve using the applicant's 2020 C R A Notice of Assessment for determining the discount for a property tax low-income relief application for 2021 due to extenuating circumstances.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Bakie, seconded by Counselor Lori Dyson Edmonds. Any discussion?
Acting Town Manager, Finance Manager Nadine, question, low income relief, and you're going to determine the assessment, what discount? Like, wouldn't it be better if we could say, like, we're going to offer her a 100% discount? Because I think, in my mind, and I always said this as a counselor, anybody who comes to the town with an application for low-income relief fund or in dire need of finances and are obviously suffering. So if there's an opportunity to give them 100%, then we should.
Yeah.
And that's my opinion. And I don't know what you mean by determining, or when you're going to determine. I know what you mean, but when, I guess, is the question, or what?
I can add to that. We had that discussion at committee level.
Well, the Chair should probably speak to it again.
Michelle, if you want to speak to that.
No, I'll leave it to Nadine.
Okay, just for clarification, the policy states that the notice of assessment that is required for the current taxation year is two years prior.
Right.
So sometimes, because of change in circumstances, people can write in for previous, use their previous year's notice of assessment as opposed to two years prior. That's the case in this situation. With using the 2020 notice of assessment, the applicant would qualify for a 75% discount as opposed to a 50% discount that would be in the 2019.
Yeah, so I guess 75%, but I guess my question is, I think it's, and the policy has said, if I remember correctly, council discretion. And is, are we able to offer 100% considering her circumstances? If it's at council discretion?
Well, I can add to that as well. I mean, like, we had the policy there. The policy is clear in terms of using line 150 and looking at those taxation seasons here. Council discretion, I believe, comes under the Municipalities Act. There's a section under Municipalities Act where, under extenuating circumstances, where council can waive real property taxes and/or business tax in the community.
But it also falls under policy too, within the municipality. We have a policy drafted that we would consider each application on a one-time, one-hour basis and have a council discretion discussion.
Yeah, I think what happened here, just for clarification, was the individual wanted us to to look at her current assessment as opposed to her past one, because in her past one, of course, her income wasn't within the range, and we did exactly what she had requested.
Yes, she didn't ask for 100%. She asked for her 2020 to be considered, knowing where she would fall within the range.
I think what the policy really is too, is that, one would say, council discretion, that means that it's not necessarily council who makes it, but it's the finance people who do that. And there's a policy in place, there's rules and regulations, and I'm sure whatever, once Nadine and her staff go there and go through the application and check all the, check out all the information, I'm sure that whatever can be done, whatever percentage can be given to the person with the requesting will be done.
Yeah, and committee in a whole, we would have had these discussions. We wouldn't have voted or made a decision. But we certainly would have had discussions around this application, because I would say that anybody who comes in here with a low-income application, that obviously are financially strapped, that we, you know, we don't get many applications, you know, in the run of a year from people applying for these low-income, and especially looking for a higher bracket. So anyway, you're saying that she's going to be entitled to 75%?
75% discount.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Just want to add that I don't think that we have ever denied any request for...
Extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, and if I was on the Finance Committee, I would be saying, or if we had the discussion as a council as a whole, I would recommend 100%. I see that we got the recommendation in front of us now, and you're saying 75%, but I would, anybody coming in with an application that are obviously in dire need, you know, they're looking for, they need assistance any way they can. So if we could offer 100%, I would.
And I think that we've been offering, like, this policy is a good policy, and it works well. And I'd be careful, though, Counselor, in saying that anybody that comes in with an application, we should give them 100%.
No, I said depending on your circumstances.
I know, but the message may be construed out there in the public that anyone that provides an app, comes in with an application, they're in dire straits, and we should give them 100%. I think we need to be careful around that.
I think they're smart enough to understand what I'm saying here. I meant, depending on what their extenuating circumstances are. I don't mean any Joe Blow coming in off the road with a low-income application. But in this case, I mean, you know, they're providing all their personal information to the town. They're requesting a discount, and in my opinion, in these circumstances, that's how I would support it.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, again, I'll just say that, no, it is, the town council of Happy Valley Goose Bay has one of the best policies in place to help low-income families. And every case is debated on an individual basis as they come in. And I'm sure that Nadine and her staff has done everything possible, what they could. And in this case, they count with 75%. And just for the record, that... And just for the record, that, uh, uh, I would say nothing different because, uh, as a, a committee of the whole, that we weren't supposed to, uh, discuss and debate, uh, the resolutions that are coming forward. They were supposed to be debated at a open council meeting, so, uh... But I'm fine with the 75% if, I'm sure Nadine that that's what you come up with and you've gone through the rules and the regulations and I'm fine with your recommendation.
Just to clarify, I said a discussion, uh, the committee at halls, we weren't supposed to make decisions, which we never done. But we've had, you know, you're entitled to have discussions. Other municipalities still hold committee at halls and I don't still see any issue with that. And I hope the next council will consider committee at halls, because to me, they're very important. When you don't have committee at halls, you're missing a lot of information.
Okay, uh, call for a vote, all those in favor, just for the record. Councillor Cran had to leave the room, uh, he had a very important call to take. And could that be reflected in the minutes that he won't be here for this vote? So we'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, votes carried unanimous. Okay, uh, final recommendation councillor?
Be resolved that Town of Happy Valley accept a lease amendment agreement between Town of Happy Valley Goose Bay and the YMCA of Northeast Avalon Incorporated to amend rent payment terms and to authorize the mayor and town clerk to sign the lease amendment agreement.
Okay, the motion is in order, do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Uh, moved by councillor Baiki, seconded by councillor Compton-Hobbs, any discussion? I guess councillor, uh, just a quick question in terms of the rent payment terms. Could you just give us a little information on what exactly it is for the public's?
So I will direct that question to Nadine.
Town clerk?
Thanks, Deputy. The original terms of the lease agreement stipulated payment annually on the first of the year. And the amendment states that it's monthly payment to be due on the first of each month.
And, and the rationale for that is because of the extenuating circumstances this year?
For cash flow purposes, it's easier management both on their side and on our side for accepting.
Thank you, Nadine, for that update.
All right, any other discussion? No further discussion, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Vote, uh, motion carried. Okay, we will now move on to the approval of checks. Councillor, councillor Baiki, and just for the record councillor Cran has just rejoined the meeting.
I would like to submit for approval of checks in the amount of one million, one thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars ninety-four cents.
So moved, do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by councillor Baiki, seconded by councillor Cran. Um, any discussion on the checks? No discussion? Uh, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, motion approved. Okay, the final thing for today is the councillors forum. Um, I guess we can start with, uh, Mayor, did you wanna start?
No, I'll finish.
You'll finish, okay. We'll start with councillor Cran, then to my, to my left. Councillor Cran?
Thank you Deputy, uh, I don't have a whole lot to say. I'd just like to throw a ball, Kay, out to, uh, our constable and the local ground search and rescue for locating a missing person earlier in the week. I understand everything is gonna work out good, so that's good stuff. Excuse me, I'd also like to, uh, throw a ball, Kay, out to Rive Lake for the good things he's doing around town with the changing population. I see they're collecting a lot of, a lot of garbage, so that's, that's always a good thing. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you councillor, councillor Dyson Edmonds?
Uh, yeah, not, not a whole lot, um, just wanna remind the public about the kids being out, uh, on the roads with their bikes. Uh, I know Larry is doing, um, some PR work around town, stopping and chatting with some of the young ones that are on bikes and explaining the importance of, of helmet safety, no doubt. Um, I'd like to welcome back, uh, Keith McKinnon with the RCMP. Uh, I saw it on a committee with Keith back in 2000, uh, late 1990s, I guess, with, when we were, uh, Labidoines for Peaceful Communities, but it's good to have him back. Uh, he's, uh, we met with him a couple of weeks ago over some RCMP issues for sure. And a great asset to the RCMP here. Um, as well, uh, hats off to Catherine Poeh who was initiated a, a bit of a cleanup around town with some of the young kids, uh, offering some incentives to, to get some garbage picked up. Um, of course, they offered a, a little bit of a gift certificate or a, or a cash prize. Um, and a couple of us, myself and Jackie Compton-Hobbs, jumped on board and, and matched her donation to, uh, to make it go further, so I encourage anybody to hop on board with that and, uh, get working on, on helping to clean up the town. But that's, uh, that's about it for us, uh, we're looking forward to some updates on the YMCA. And it was great to hear Jason on the radio this morning. He answered a lot of questions, uh, a lot of questions that I've been getting both through Facebook and through email and through text as well, so it was good to have a lot of that information out there. Looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you councillor, councillor Compton-Hobbs?
Yeah, I haven't got a whole lot, uh, to YMCA and having Jason met with Jason last night. And he's doing a presentation tomorrow through the February North Chamber of Commerce that I believe there's over 50 people registered for. So, uh, he's getting information out there, people are getting hyped up, community's getting excited and, uh, June is gonna be fast approaching. So, uh, hoping to have that swim team in that YMCA as soon as, as we can. Hopefully there's no more further delays and, uh, I think that's a big asset to the community, to the new wellness center, to get people out and get the people physically active. Um, just got a little bit on recreation, I touched on it earlier, but, uh, hopefully we can get some of the leagues like minor soccer and minor ball and ladies, men's and, uh, back on track and, and, uh, hopefully we will succeed this summer, if there's no interruptions. Uh, Canada Day celebrations, Canada Day is coming up, we will be doing a virtual celebration again this year due to COVID. Uh, so stay tuned for that. And, um, I just wanted to mention, uh, uh, I wanted to wish DJ all the best, he's still in his position as municipal tech. Uh, he done some great work in that position. Uh, I always said to him, he's an asset to the town and, uh, I wanna wish him well in his new position, so, wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, councillor Baiki.
Thank you, I want to congratulate DJ Elliott for his new role at Superintendent Public Works as well as Ronnie Monique and the CSO HGO. And thank you to Keith Poeh for filling in the role of Superintendent Public Works on top of his other role. We greatly appreciate your dedication. I would like to extend my condolences to the Benassi family in Brenton, Cheeshe, and their later loved one, Doris, elder Sebastian Benassi. And I'm also excited to see the YMCA being opened soon, hopefully at the end of June. I'd look forward to being part of the, looking for that membership, so, hope to do some activity, health, healthy activities. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Uh, Mayor, I guess I'll, 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 uh, just have a few words to say and then I'll turn it over to you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, I'd like to echo a lot of things that were said here today in terms of, uh, you know, congratulating, uh, DJ Elliott as Superintendent of Public Works and, uh, as well as Ronnie Monique as HGO. And, uh, and as well, Chris Chin, Christopher Chin, who will be our Superintendent of Taxation. And finally, I think, uh, I want to acknowledge Julia Kellin. Uh, she's recently, she was hired this week as a animal control officer. Her family has a long, long history in this community, she's young, full of energy and, uh, I think is, uh, she's gonna be a valuable asset to the community. Father's a former mayor, we have one of our largest streets, or grandfather, I should say, was a former mayor. Uh, since passed on, we have a lot of, uh, the family is well-known in the community, I think she'd be a welcome addition to our community, so welcome aboard. He, uh, I also want to congratulate Kirk Lethbridge and, uh, for the fundraiser that he, uh, conducted, uh, over the past weekend for Air Daffodil, to raise money for, uh, travel for cancer patients, uh, outside of the region. Uh, great job, I understand about sixteen hundred dollars was raised so far. And if, uh, anyone's listening, would like to make a contribution to this worthwhile cause, they can certainly get in touch with Mr. Lethbridge and, uh, by all means, he'd be more than happy to take, take a contribution. And then I also want to acknowledge the, uh, I guess the, uh, the medical staff, doctors and nurses that are head off to Toronto today to help in the fight, uh, about this vicious third wave of COVID-19, including Jennifer Hinks of Happy Valley Goose Bay. And, uh, you know, we're all proud of everybody's going, but as a, as a hometown, uh, woman from this hometown who's a, a critical care nurse, I think it's, uh, we're all proud of, for her stepping forward as we are for all of them, but wanted to acknowledge that as well. Um, grow, uh, roads and grounds, uh, there's been a fair bit of work done over the last number of weeks. We had a flooding event about three weeks ago. Things have settled down since then, I know that crews were out working continuously. And, uh, and hats off to Keith Poeh for filling in for the position, uh, that, uh, until DJ Elliott was appointed, uh, last week. Um, with that, uh, I'll just leave it, leave it at that for now, thank you. Okay, Mayor, I can turn it over to you to have a few comments?
Yeah, thank you, uh, I just want to take Larry for the work he done Sunday and to the ground search and rescue. I received a call early Sunday morning from, uh, Grand Chief, uh, Ezinrich, asking if, uh, you know, if, if the community constable could be, or our reinforcement officer could be involved, uh... So I told him I didn't see a problem, so we sent that memo to council, uh, that was done. Uh, I wanted, uh, send out, uh, a word of thanks to our workers, uh, roads and grounds. Uh, we had a lot of flooding, they dealt with a lot of issues, uh, we had a lot of snow, they've, uh, not done a lot of it. And, uh, want to welcome DJ, Vijay Elliott to our, uh, our, uh, staff as well as, uh, the other ones. And, uh, you know, we talk about, uh, we hear a lot of, uh, equality for women and, and equalness. And, uh, I'm glad, uh, and thrilled to hear that a young girl has been hired, uh, as our animal control officer. And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I think this is the first female to, to ever hold that position with the town. I could be mistaken, but I, I did ask some people and, uh, to their knowledge, they do believe that this is the first time that our animal control officer is a female, so, uh, we welcome the young lady aboard. Uh, looking forward to the wellness center, Randy, uh, what we talked about earlier on, uh, while I'm here, if you need, uh, any help with the, uh, the Corona application, let me know. Other than that, uh, that's it for me.
Okay, uh, thank you Mayor, and, uh, with that, I just wanna thank, thank council, thank staff and thank everybody for listening in, those that are listening in. And I call for a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Moved by councillor Compton-Hobbs, seconded by councillor Laurie Dyson, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.